We'll call the meeting to order and ask for a roll call.
Blunier.
Here.
Hilliard.
Here.
Leach.
Here.
Mendel.
Here.
Newman.
Here.
Parrott.
Here.
If you'd join me in pledge allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to your republic over which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for There is no public hearing or presentation or special reports, and I believe the Park District is asked to address the board.
How's everybody doing this evening?
Good.
Excellent. My name is Joel Dickerson. I'm the executive director with the Morton Park District, and I have a prepared statement that I'd like to read if that's okay. While we understand that upon further inspection of the existing liquor license classes and corresponding regulations, it is the Village of Morton's desire to solidify these regulations prior to the scheduled Morton Community Fourth of July celebration planned for McClellan Park, the Park District believes that these new regulations don't serve to create a one-size-fits-all plan for Class H liquor license applicants. Specifically, the size restriction of 22,500 square feet will disproportionately affect some future licensed applicants. 22,500 square feet is just over a half acre. Most properties within the Village of Morton don't have that amount of open space to begin with. Others, like McClellan Park, have significantly more open space than that. Ultimately, the size and scope of an outdoor special event is limited by the amount of open space available at the given site. While a one-size-fits-all plan sounds like a great idea, we believe in reality selecting a specific square footage restriction is antithetical to a one-size-fits-all plan. By selecting a set square footage requirement, you could see certain applicants in the future be able to operate their entire property as a space for alcohol sales and consumption, while others being limited to a smaller percentage of their property. We believe a more appropriate regulation would allow a certain percentage of available open space at any given site be allowed for the sale and possession of alcohol. The proposed maximum square footage of 22,500 square feet is only 1.37% of the total event location at McClellan Park, and only 1.5% of the property when the parking area is excluded. Using a percentage would allow the square footage of the site to dictate the size of where, the size of the area where alcohol will be allowed. By allowing a maximum percentage, assuming this percentage is under 50% of the site location to be utilized for alcohol sales and consumptions, it would ensure that the larger the event venue is, the more space there would be that would be restricted from alcohol sales and consumption. As for the fencing requirements, we believe that existing permanent fencing, as long as it's in good condition, should be allowed to serve as an acceptable barrier. McClellan Park currently has around 550 yards of existing permanent four-foot fencing bordering the south and west boundaries of the originally proposed area for the beer tent, as well as 160 yards of existing permanent six-foot fencing bordering the east side of the proposed area. At the end of the day, the Park District does not believe that alcohol sales and consumptions are needed for the Morton Community Fourth of July celebration at McClellan Park to be a great, successful event. However, we also do not believe that individuals who wish to have an alcohol beverage at this event should be corralled into 150 by 150-foot space encircled by a six-foot-tall fence. The original proposal would have created an inclusive space with live music sponsored by our Morton Fine Arts Association, where individuals could enjoy an alcoholic beverage alongside individuals who don't wish to partake. And we believe that the proposed ordinance changes, including size and fencing, will detract from the community and family atmosphere that was originally proposed. I've passed around a, an event map. This event map does reflect a 150 by 150-foot space for a six-foot fenced-in area for alcohol sales and consumption, just so you guys can see how that looks on the existing site plan.
All right. Thank you, Joel. Anyone else in the audience want to talk? All right. If not, then the consent agenda tonight is the approval of the minutes, the regular meeting May 17th of 2021, and the approval of the bills. We could have a motion.
I move to approve.
Second.
Any questions? If not, call the roll.
Blunier.
Yes.
Hilliard.
Yes.
Leach.
Yes.
Mendel.
Yes.
Newman.
Yes.
Parrott.
Yes.
Motion passes.
Thank you. I have only the one item tonight, as Joel just spoke on, the ordinance 22-02, an ordinance making amendments regarding liquor licenses for outdoor events to Chapter 8 of Title III of the Morton Municipal Code. We could have a motion.
I move approval of ordinance 22-02. Second.
All right. Is there any comments, concerns, or changes you'd like to discuss?
I'd like to make a quick comment. You know, we've talked a lot about this, several have talked to the chief about this at length, and I guess I disagree with what we're proposing here. I feel like my, my vision of the space is much more of a family-inclusive space, and like Joel mentioned, I don't think alcohol is necessary for, for that, you know, to have a, have a fun time. But I, you know, when I'm out with my family, if we go to dinner and I choose to have a beer, I don't want to be away from my family. And I think what was originally proposed, being the larger area, I envisioned it something similar to Mackinac Valley Vineyards, where there's a concert playing and a, you know, large, open grass area where families can go and have a picnic on the lawn and hang out all together. And if the adults choose to have an adult beverage, they can. And then there's lots of others that are in the same area that, that aren't partaking. And the way it's set up now, I envision it much more like, I'll say, the Pumpkin Festival Beer Tent, where, you know, if you choose to have a, have a, have a beer, you know, I'm probably not going to go in there, you know, without my family. I, they're at the event, I want to spend time with my family. And so, just like the Pumpkin Festival Beer Tent, I don't go there because I can't go there with my family. And when I'm at the Pumpkin Festival, I'm there with my family. And I think the, the larger area would be more conducive to kind of the, the community as a whole being part of it. And I understand the reasonings, and like I said, we've, we've discussed at length, and, and I fully understand, fully respect the opinions of the chief and, and others that don't believe that to be a good idea, and, but I just want to say my little piece.
Any other comments, or? If not, we'll call the roll.
Hilliard.
Yes.
Leach.
Yes.
Mendel. Yes.
Newman.
Yes.
Parrott.
No.
Blunier.
Yes.
Motion passes.
That's all I have. Village Clerk.
Nothing tonight, Your Honor.
Village Administration.
I have one item on the agenda tonight, Your Honor, is the Business Sustainability Grants. We did a second grant round. If the trustees will remember, the state awarded us $324,113 for these grants, and we only expended 100, just over 100,000 on the first round. We were approached by the state asking what we, whether we could spend the remaining amount if we did an additional round. Honestly, I thought we would. We only received, actually, there's nine approvals on here tonight. I did find out today, there was one in my email that I have missed, so I am still working on processing that one, and I will bring that to the board for the next meeting so that we can get that paid before June 30th. But altogether, we will spend approximately 118,000 of the 223,000 we had left, so there's still going to be, you know, 104,000 that's going to be left on the table. I was actually really pretty surprised that we didn't have more participation, you know, we were anticipating prorating, everybody's, you know, taking the pot of everything, everyone was eligible for, and prorating what we had left to, so that everybody got their share of the percentage of what was left to be spent, but we didn't get that many applications. Everyone that we have received, we have approved. There hasn't been anybody that's been ineligible. I'm pending the, some documentation on the one that I found out about today. It came in timely, just got missed in my email, so. I think, you know, it's a great program. Unfortunately, we're going to run out of time because the state says we have to expend the funds by June 30th. So you have a list there of the nine that are ready to be approved, and I would ask for approval for those.
One, one quick question. Do, do we have any idea, you know, can, I kind of expected us to spend the rest of the money, I mean, it's money that's there, do we have any idea why we haven't gotten any feedback at all, the people that we know haven't applied that we thought maybe would?
Right. No. You know, especially some of the businesses that were really hurt, like the cinema, the bowling alley was shut down for a long time, we did not hear from either of those. To my knowledge, they, if you received the Business Interruption Grant directly from the state, you couldn't get this grant because it's the same pot of money. But to my knowledge, they didn't get those either, so, no, I don't really know. I don't know if people thought it was too much paperwork. We tried to make it as simple as possible and still meet the guidelines of the state, and we gave them plenty of time, too. The first round, I could kind of see, because it was like a two-week turnaround. But this round, we gave them a month and a half to apply, and we still didn't get that many applicants, so.
I move to approve.
Second.
Any other questions? Call the roll.
Leach.
Yes.
Mendel. Yes.
Newman.
Yes.
Parrott.
Yes.
Blunier.
Yes.
Hilliard.
Yes.
Motion passes.
Chief of Police.
Nothing tonight, Your Honor.
Okay. Corporation Counsel.
Nothing tonight, Your Honor.
Director of Fire Emergency Services.
Director, I just had one item tonight. We've completed our specifications for a replacement of a fire engine that is budgeted in this current year, so I am just requesting permission to send that out to bid.
Okay. Does anybody have a problem with that? It's in the budget?
Need that in the vote?
Motion?
I don't think we have to have a vote.
Ken, you don't have to.
We don't.
Okay.
Thank you.
Bring the bids back. Is that all?
Yes, sir.
I think you spent enough there, maybe.
It's not spent yet, but.
Director of Public Works.
Several items tonight, Your Honor. First, I'd just like to announce that Main Street will be closed under I-74 between Nebraska Avenue and Harding Road, beginning Monday, June 14th through mid-July of '21. This is for IDOT to work on the bridge over Main Street, some significant repairs to steel, piers, you know, concrete, stuff like that. So this will be a big inconvenience, but hopefully it'll get everything out of the way and get things open again. So next, in front of you is Item B. I'd like to ask for acceptance of professional services agreement for the design of lighting improvements along Main Street. It's from I-74 to Cortland with Hanson Professional Services Incorporated in the amount of $26,800.
I move approval. Second.
You want any explanation on that?
Yeah, just real quick, we had a meeting quite a while ago, and I was directed by most of the board, I think Craig, I don't think you were in this position at that time, but I think everybody else was here, and we had that discussion, and I budgeted for it in the FY '22 budget, so this would be that first step to design the lighting along the east side of Main Street. Obviously, I would come back to you guys once we get bids for approval of the contract.
And that lighting is from Cortland South?
Yeah, yeah, pretty much from I-74 to Cortland.
With street light, lighting?
Yes, street lighting, yep.
So I voiced my opinion at the time, I think, and I want to reiterate the fact that I think it's not necessary, the lighting on that. And I'm not really sure where this is coming, who's driving this, but I want to voice my opinion, I think it's not necessary, and I don't think we should spend the money, even for the design of it.
I believe this was brought forth by the Business District Commission, wasn't it, as a project that they proposed?
Right. They've requested probably for over a year to do something about lighting on North Main Street, and so the funds for this would come out of the Business District funds. So from that, that's the way it was proposed in January.
And, I mean, as I look down Cortland to the, from Main Street going west, I think that's my personal conservative opinion, I think it's well overlit, and I think there's other underlit places in Morton that need lighting, and I, that's where I'm basing my opinion.
I would just remind you that if it was in any of the residential areas, we couldn't spend the Business District funds on those unless they were in the, specifically in the Business District. So that's the one difference, I would say, is when you're looking at other areas around town.
That's not the case, but thanks for that.
Sure. Joel, I need to ask a question. In terms of, when you put in street lights, is it more designed for the existing, let's say, residences or businesses, or is it for safety in people who commute on the street?
Uh, this would be to, obviously, light the roadway, so, you know, obviously for, for traffic. That could be bicycles, it could be, you know, vehicles, but those two things.
There is a lot of traffic on that part of the, of the road, because I go out there quite often, out there to, for business, so.
If I remember from January, I think that section of Court, or Main Street from Harding to Cortland has over 6,000 cars a day on it, which is busier than sections of Jackson Street, sections of Detroit Street, and sections of South Main Street. So it is an extremely busy road for the village.
And would it be designed in the effect that if they ever added a turn lane, it'd be set back far enough for that, or not?
I mean, that stuff we'll look at, but, you know, I mean, I think it's going to be, we'll look at that. I mean, our hope is to avoid some of that, but, I mean, when you do a turn lane, then you definitely have storm sewer work, you got current rural, rural street section out there, road section, which, you know, I think the ditches are just fine, so do those get shifted over if there was a turn lane, or do you go to more of an enclosed storm sewer system at that time? But we'll, we'll look at those things for sure, and I'll get you that feedback.
And that section of the street is not desolate. There's businesses out there. I try, I go out to our farm all the time, at night, a lot, and it, there's a lot of light existing, and more businesses hopefully coming out that way, and to put streetlights every 150 feet or whatever Cortland has is, it's just excessive.
The other thing I would say, the other thing I would say, trustee Mendel, is that parking lot lights, when you're driving out that way, it can look like there's a lot of light in the sky area, but it's not shining on the road, and it's those shadows that allow you to see if there's something ahead, because you mentioned that, I think, in January, and so that's one thing that I specifically looked at. So as you look at where Parker's at, you look where Gold's Gym is, when those lights are lit, your first impression is that it's bright out here, but it's not, I don't think is bright on the road where we want the light to actually shine from these streetlights.
Well, okay, so we can have an opinion about that, or you can offend me by being, saying I don't know the difference between light in the sky and light in the road, but that was not necessary.
I wasn't trying to offend.
Thank you.
Anyone else got any comments? Not, call the roll.
Mendel.
No.
Newman.
Yes.
Parrott.
Yes.
Blunier.
Yes.
Hilliard.
No.
Leach.
Yes.
Motion passes.
Next is Item C. I'd like to ask for acceptance of professional services agreement for traffic control warrant analysis at various locations with Hanson Professional Services Incorporated in the amount of $16,000.
Motion.
Motion to approve.
Second.
Yeah, this is another one, about a month ago was, was brought as a request to the board, and I was given the direction to bring back something. So this, this is that around Oklahoma. One thing I would add, and I, I sent a memo out, is that about 4,000 of this is something that I would really like to do, and that would be to develop a, a policy, a local policy, that would help outline conditions where we should place or remove stop or yield signs. As we know, or I know, most of us here tonight know, these are difficult requests for myself and the chief, they're typically very emotional requests involving children, stuff like that. I think this would be another step to really help us as people call and want a stop sign or a yield sign, this would maybe help that process to streamline it and be a little more efficient on both ends, so that people are more aware of this is why we do things, and that stop and yield signs aren't just randomly placed somewhere. So that's the first 4,000, the other are four locations along Oklahoma, I would like to hold off a little bit on that, but get it approved tonight. We did put the binder down on Fieldstone today, so if it doesn't rain tomorrow, we'll be connected to Jackson tomorrow with surface course in Fieldstone Section 4. So I'm looking forward to seeing if traffic changes some in there. I think right now, I think even along Oklahoma, I'm not sure those are that necessary to fix right now, but I think it would be good to look at. So this would include setting up, you know, the video, terror engineering would be a sub to Hanson, and set up some, some video to do traffic counts along here so that we could provide analysis on that. But I would like to do that during school, I think that's more appropriate time, so later on here in the fall would be a better time to do that. But I'd like to get it approved now, if I could. So with that, I'd like to answer any questions.
I agree with that timeline, I think, I think you're exactly right. I think during school, and now that that road is opened up through there, I think that throws a whole nother, you know, with school particularly, you know, and then opening up that road throws a whole new kind of wrench in their variable in the, in the whole scheme of things, and I think would be silly to do it now before we kind of see how that works here in the fall.
I'd like to comment, I, I do think it is a very good idea to try to develop some guidance policy as to, you know, placement of, of yield stop signs in, particularly in residential areas, so that we can maintain some consistency, uniformity, and also, again, as you say, kind of when you get that emotional request, you've got something kind of a stand on, and, you know, point to that this, this is a policy.
Yeah, I appreciate those comments.
I think that's a, I think that's a good element of this, of this proposal.
Any other comments? Not, call the roll.
Newman.
Yes.
Parrott.
Yes.
Blunier.
Yes.
Hilliard.
Yes.
Leach.
Yes.
Mendel.
Yes.
Motion passes.
That's all I have tonight, Your Honor.
All right, zoning and code enforcement, Brad?
I have two items tonight, Your Honor. First item is ordinance 22-03, an ordinance making amendments to the definition of business signs to Title 10 of the Morton Municipal Code.
So move. Second.
Is that a second?
Yes, sir.
All right. You want to explain that a little bit, Brad?
Yes, this, this was brought forth, I believe, two meetings ago, and was asked to be tabled to make a few adjustments or minor changes to it. I do believe the changes are in here about the shared sign, it needs to go through site plan review, and in order for it to be approved, it would also have to have a shared drive. I think those were the two items that were requested.
Okay. So is there any comments by the board? Okay, let's call the roll.
Parrott.
Yes.
Blunier.
Yes.
Hilliard.
Yes.
Leach.
Yes.
Mendel.
Yes.
Newman.
Yes.
Motion passes.
The second item tonight, Your Honor, is ordinance 22-04, an ordinance making amendments regarding off-street parking of trailers to Title 10 and Title 10 of the Morton Municipal Code.
Square of motion?
Second.
Okay. I'm going to do a little explanation.
Sure, this ordinance also was brought forth two meetings ago and was tabled to make a few adjustments to it. I do believe those adjustments were made, and I believe it consists of allowing not only to put trailers, boats, et cetera, on a driveway, but also can be parked in the rear yard as long as it's on a paved surface. And there is some verbiage that explains the paved surface and what is allowed on the driveway and such, and I'm not going to speak for Chief Miller, some of this is in Title IX, but I do not believe there are any changes to that.
No, I think we cut that to save.
So this does allow parking in the rear yard?
Yes, on paved surface only.
Probably non-enclosed.
Non-enclosed.
Chief, you want to weigh in on this a little bit?
Yeah, as far as the, the Title IX, which fell under the parking under police, nothing has changed from the ordinance that was here two meetings ago. Basically, it prohibits parking on the street for more than 48 hours of a trailer, has to be coned at all times, which was consistent with what we'd brought forth, like I said, two meetings ago, so nothing's been changed on that.
And it's parked on the driveway, it has to be off the sidewalk?
That's correct, yes, has to be off the sidewalk, yes, cannot block the sidewalk.
Okay. Any comments or concerns?
I have a concern, I have no comment. As I looked at this, I saw that it, it had changed from what was presented about, presented to us about three weeks ago in our packets, and it changed in the area that the last ordinance talked about, and, and I know we didn't bring it up because it wasn't ready, but it talked about having a recreational vehicle, camper, boat trailer, trailer, on the driveway. On this particular ordinance, it limits it that to one, either a camper or a recreational vehicle, or a boat trailer, or a trailer. In the prior ordinance that we had, before it changed about four years ago, there wasn't a limitation on the number of trailers on the driveway, so long as it didn't exceed past the front edge of the house. About four years ago, when it changed, that, that didn't change, except there was able to be a trailer, or, and I'll just say trailer to blanket it, extending past for the front of the house, on a period of not to exceed 72 hours, for a period not to exceed eight days in a month. So as Chief Miller and I will say, that was next to impossible to try to enforce that, or keep track of that. This now, we allow a trailer to be past the front of the house, but we're limited to the number of trailers which can be on the property. I met with Code Enforcement Officer Marks earlier today to express my concern about this, and one of the concerns, example I gave, is you got individuals that live in a duplex that have a shared driveway, which one are we going to tell can't park a trailer on their property, on the drive? Because it doesn't talk about residents, it talks about driveways. And then again, as we got more into the conversation, I don't, we don't limit the number of vehicles, why are we limiting the number of trailers on there? So I would move to amend it, and there are several sections that I would amend, with them all reading the same, they're all the letter F, some letter H, depending on what section you are. And that would, instead of reading, it shall be lawful in this zoning district to park one recreational vehicle, or camper, or boat trailer, or trailer on a driveway, I would make them, I would move to amend that to read, "It shall be lawful in this zoning district to park recreational vehicles, comma, campers, comma, boat trailers, and/or trailers on a driveway." The main concern, what I see from the trailer warrants anyway, is to get the trailers off the street. off the street where they're a, more of a safety hazard for traffic.
Did you make that as a motion?
Yes.
I second it.
I think that the concern of the duplex may not be a concern, Council, because they have separate addresses and, probably, I don't see that as a big a concern, but I do see this as if you had a camper and you had an open trailer that you spoke out that, the way this reads, you couldn't have both, and, and I agree with what you're saying.
Just to add, in my conversation with Mr. Marks, he did not have an issue with changing this to this format.
My only concern is we're putting them on the driveway. I'm not sure if neighbors are going to want two trailers on driveways next to them. I mean, it's all, it's changing the look now from not in the yards or side yards, to the front of the houses. Now you're going to allow more than one. I'm just...
Your Honor?
Yeah.
With all due respect, right now they can have more than one trailer on the driveway, if it's not exceeding past the front of the house.
But only for a period of time?
No. It's only past the extension of the front of the house. It can be parked on a driveway, behind the frontage of the house, and there's not a limitation of that.
Correct.
And we're now putting that on.
Wouldn't that be kind of an unusual situation, though, to have a driveway behind the house or beyond the front of the house, back of the front of the house, I guess?
I have a driveway that goes back beyond the front of my house. It's long enough back that, if, if I wanted, I could get, I could get two trailers on there. Now, that would be a inconvenience for me, because I would have to pull everything out and shuttle around to, to do that now, but I have two children that drive, and I have a wife that drives, and multiple vehicles, and I have to do that now to get the vehicle that I want. You know, so, you know, the inconvenience is sort of on the homeowner, having to maneuver that around, but again, I don't have a reduction on the number of vehicles. I can park in my driveway as long as I can get them in there and not cross in the sidewalk.
I, I agree with that. I think it's, it's a little bit of self-regulation, you know, I think, you know, and I can say, okay, if I have a, a boat that's parked in my driveway, you know, for, for a month, well, if I come in, you know, one night with a landscape trailer and want to load some stuff up, you know, then, then that allowed, this would allow something like that, but, you know, me personally, I'm probably not going to put two trailers in my driveway, because, and like you say, you get a, you got to move the trailer, you know, it kind of becomes an inconvenience for the homeowner to shuffle things around, so I think it's a little bit self-regulating, where I don't think it's going to be, all of a sudden, everybody's going to be parking two trailers on their driveway, type of thing.
What if, what if it does become a problem? What if it becomes a place to store trailers, they don't, people don't use for a period of time, and they have two and three trailers stacked on top of each other? Is that a possibility, and what do you do in that case? Or do we not interfere?
I don't know that that's going to be a problem, but if you're saying, is it a possibility it could be a problem, yeah. You know, a lot of things are possibilities, but I guess if, if that starts to rear its head, then we can review it at that time. But I, I don't see that that's going to be a problem, but I'm not cresting, so...
Okay. Any other comments or concerns? We're going to vote for the amendment first.
I mean, I just, I would just hate to see where we'd have a driveway with two or three trailers sitting on it all the time, and they end up moving cars out to the street because they can't get into the garage because of the trailers, or whatever. I mean, I guess, as Trustee Parrott says, it is somewhat self-regulating. I don't know.
We certainly don't want lawn businesses parking their trailers in the driveway and vehicles in the road.
Or any business flat.
Right. But I think you open yourself up to that a little bit, when you allow more than one trailer.
That's my concern.
I think that's one of the reasons why we're allowing them on the driveway to begin with, is to get them off the street where they are a safety hazard.
Personal trailers.
Again, Your Honor, it doesn't say that. It doesn't limit it to business trailers or personal trailers. It says trailers.
I'd like to, I'd like to table this for further review, because I'm, I don't know that I'm suggesting the right thing, but I'm not comfortable with what we're going forward with as an amendment, so I just would rather talk with Chief about it and Brad, and get some more opinions before I vote, but that's my thought.
You said lawn service, business, trailer, they can park on the street, they do park on the street, correct?
They have. We're trying to get them off the street, because a lot of them are big, heavy, black trailers, and that aren't coned, but you really can't run a business from your home.
I do. What about a contractor that has a closed trailer? That he goes, I'm, I'm just asking now. We may be way off base, if I am, I could stop.
No, I know. I mean, the concern is that, that we get the trailers off the road, and you don't really are allowed to run a business from your home. Now, you're saying a contractor trailer, to me, they don't belong in the neighborhoods.
If I may, we have zoning regulations on home occupations, and there are circumstances in which those are permitted under our code. The proposed ordinance makes no distinction between business and personal trailers. In drafting the ordinance, it's my opinion that it's a difficult distinction to make, and more difficult to enforce, but I'd certainly be glad to take input from the board on the ordinance and, you know, make amendments as requested by any trustees. This ordinance is a product of substantial collaboration between Brad and Chief Miller and myself and others, and we appreciate board feedback, and we'd be glad to factor that in. But to the discussion of, you know, business versus personal trailers, I, I would note that that distinction isn't reflected in the ordinance as presented before you tonight.
Say, say that last part again.
There is no distinction made between business and personal trailers in this ordinance.
And we had a lot of discussion on that. Courtesy of the mayor, if, I mean, he was big on, you know, trying to control the business, but then that's where attorney said, that's going to be difficult to...
But the chief has agreed that the trailers do have to be coned, or they're going to get ticketed, because, I'm not picking on the landscapers, but any business trailer today are very large, 12-foot, 16-foot, heavy, black trailers, hard to see, and if they're not coned, somebody's going to hit someone sometime, and their car is not going to move.
And to be clear, they can only do that under this ordinance during the day now.
That's red for 48 hours, up to 48 hours. But it has to be coned 24 hours a day. So, that whole 48 hours, it has to be coned.
Right. And we've been lax on that, so we, we plan on enforcing that just for safety.
So, a self-employed contractor with a white enclosed trailer parks in front of his, or beside his house, or in front of his house in the evenings, overnight, leaves in the morning, goes to work. Is that okay or not okay?
By this ordinance, it would be, as long as it's coned, I believe.
So, they're not all black trailers, they're white, and they're whatever, all fancy stuff, and I'm just asking. I'm really, I'm...
And, and the cones with the reflection that is in the ordinance?
Yes.
My son had a trailer in the road, and when I came around the corner, that thing just stood out. So, if they get the correct cones, with they, with that on there, they work.
True.
But nobody's doing it right now. Or very few.
There are people that do.
Right.
More campers than anything that are on the street, you see that.
I just don't want somebody to hit one, young or old person.
For safety.
So, Trustee Blunner wanted to table it. Are we comfortable? I mean, we can make it a motion if that gets a second. Are you wanting to table this and discuss it more later? Are you ready to pass it? Try something different, and see what works.
Was that a motion then?
Was not at the time.
I wanted to table it if we were going to make an amendment to it. I'll take it as it is.
So, there is a motion, a second to amend, so that would be, in the absence of a motion to table being made, seconded and passing, you would act tonight on the amendment first, and then if the amendment passes, you'd act on the amended ordinance, otherwise you'd act on the original ordinance. So, I guess what I'm saying, Trustee Blunner, is if you don't want to vote on the amendment, you would need to make a motion to table it, otherwise you'll be voting on the amendment tonight.
Make it easy.
What did you say?
A vote. I'll just go to the amendment, go ahead.
Okay, all right. Nothing else said, let's call the roll on the amendment, and then why don't you clarify what we're voting on in the amendment, so everybody understands?
To simplify it, you're voting on eliminating the number limitation, which is in the present ordinance, limiting it to one, your, this amendment if passed would strike that, and would eliminate the limit on the number of trailers in the driveway.
And we're not voting on just the amendment, we're voting on the ordinance as amended?
You're voting on the amendment, only the amendment.
Okay.
Are you clear? All right, call the roll.
Hilliard?
Yes.
Leach?
No.
Mennel?
Yes.
Newman?
Yes.
Parrott?
Yes.
Blunner?
No.
Motion passes.
Now, the original ordinance is amended, so there was a motion, second on that, so...
We'll call roll on that.
Blunner?
Yes.
Hilliard?
Yes.
Leach?
Yes.
Mennel?
Yes.
Newman?
Yes.
Parrott?
Yes.
Motion passes. amended, motion passes.
All right, thanks for hanging in there. Is that all you have tonight, Brad?
That's all I have tonight, Your Honor.
Village trustees, any of you have anything tonight? If not, there's no need for closed session, so if we have a motion, do adjourn.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Immediate adjourn.